I'm calling this meeting of Fairfield County Council to order Monday, March 26, 2018, at 6:00 PM. First item for action tonight is the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to that effect?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Seven to zero. The agenda is approved. We're now down to the invocation. Councilmember Trapp, please.
Let us pray. God, thank you for allowing us to be here today. Please be with us as we conduct the business of the county and let all decisions that we make be in the betterment for all the citizens of the county. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Trapp. Now down to the approval of minutes from our regular meeting on March 12, 2018. Do we have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the minutes from the regular meeting, March 12, 2018. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? All right, those minutes are approved. No public presentations tonight. Ms. Davis, would you please let us know who signed up to speak for public comment?
We have one speaker tonight, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on the hospital.
Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District One. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for their continued diligent work and hard efforts in time, energy, and money putting forth to ensure that we have continued quality emergency healthcare in Fairfield County. You guys have done a great job. I've complimented you before on the great job that you did in bringing the deal together with Providence/LifePoint. It's just a wonderful thing for this county on many levels. But I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank another group that has been so indispensable to this county for over 50 years, and that's the Fairfield Memorial Hospital employees. These dedicated employees have been here through thick and thin over 50 years. And just off the top of my head, an estimate made it well into the hundreds of thousands of patient care interactions. It's been an institution. The Fairfield employees in that hospital have kept this hospital going despite Mack truck left, Walmart left, VC Summer closed, Belks closed, the movie theater closed, yet we still have and all through these 50 years, the dedicated hospital employees who have served this community. And obviously, I know a lot of them and have worked with them. And for the most part, they're here because they love Fairfield County. If you're in the medical field, you can get a job just about where you want. But they want to serve this county and have for over 50 years. So if you get an opportunity, you see a Fairfield employee, former or present, just thank them for their service and being part of this county, such an integral part of this county, saving, I don't know how many thousands of lives, helping others get through the day, and doing what medical professionals have been doing for over 50 years in this county. They've stuck by Fairfield County, and I thank council for sticking by them. Again, if you see a Fairfield employee, past, present, and maybe even future down at the new hospital, thank them for their service. Been great for this county. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes segment one.
Thank you. We're now down to public hearings. We'll open, well, let me announce it first, an ordinance by Fairfield County establishing procedures to expend funds appropriated by Fairfield County in its annual fiscal budget for collaborative public works projects. We'll open this public hearing at 6:04 PM. Mrs. Davis, did anyone sign to speak?
We have one speaker, Mr. Cal Harrison.
Thank you.
Hey, guys. My wife, I think most of you have spoken to her about the sidewalk project in Ridgeway, Angela Harrison. She's on town council. Unfortunately, our little one is having some health issues and had an appointment at MUSC, and she's driving back and was unable to make it. So she asked me to come and speak in favor of the ordinance and also the sidewalk plan. I think, like I say, at least several of you have a copy of it. The town council submitted the request a little over a year ago, and the purpose of this ordinance, as I understand it, is to set some criteria for that, which makes perfect sense. So I certainly support it from a citizen standpoint, and like I say, she does too. There was, speaking specifically about the request, this is the first improvement that Ridgeway has sought for sidewalks since, I believe, the late 90s. And this would benefit around 600 residents who live within town and then also in the south part of town along Highway 34. The highlights include a new sidewalk to the town's new park that opened this past year, improvements in the downtown area around the Cotton Yard, which is our festival area where Pig on the Ridge is held. There's also along Church Street, there's an apartment complex that I think years ago they were going to try and get sidewalks to, but they ran out of funding for. And then there's a large section along Highway 34, just down past Bible Light's Church, where there's a number of residents, some of which, some of whom are in the town limits and a number who are outside the town limits. And in that particular area, there've been a number of fatalities. The most recent one, pedestrian fatalities, the most recent one was just a couple of years ago, right before this request came. So the residents of Ridgeway have put together, signed a petition. There's about 100 names I wanted to hand over to y'all on behalf of Angela, and there's another copy of the sidewalk plan if you need it.
Thank you. All right, it's now 6:06 PM. We'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded. We now close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? That public hearing is now closed. And we're now down to ordinances, resolutions, and orders. The first is on the same subject matter as the public hearing. Third and final reading of ordinance number 691. It's an ordinance to amend, or excuse me, an ordinance by Fairfield County establishing procedures to expend funds appropriated by Fairfield County in its annual fiscal budget for collaborative capital public works projects. Do we have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All right, I've got a motion to make. Make a motion that at this time, we amend the ordinance by adopting amendment number one. This amendment is in front of you. I'll be glad to explain it if it receives a second. All right, it's been moved and properly seconded to add or to amend the motion by adopting amendment number one. Discussion on that, just to give everybody an idea of what that does, this will amend the ordinance in Section 4 by striking 15% and inserting 20% in its place, also strikes total project budget and inserts county funding requested in its place. The explanation on this is that as the ordinance is currently written, it requires matching funds of 15% of the overall project budget. I believe basing this on the overall project budget was an inadvertent error in the drafting of the ordinance and was not the intention of the Administration and Finance Committee. The intent, rather, was to require a certain percentage of match of the county funding requested, not the overall budget. So that's the amendment. It will also bring the match requirement to 20%. To give you a little bit more information on that and real numbers, as the ordinance is currently written, for example, Ridgeway is requesting or asking the county for $57,000 for a match for a sidewalk project with the overall cost of the project at around $500,000. So the way the ordinance is written now, the town of Ridgeway really wouldn't need to ask us for that if they could do what the ordinance requires, because they would already be required to put $75,000 towards the project, which is greater than the $57,000 they're even requesting of us. If we adopt the amendments and pass the ordinance, it would only require the town of Ridgeway to put forward at a minimum $11,400 to have the request considered by the county. Any other discussion or questions on that amendment? All right, we'll take a vote on the amendment now. Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Six and one, the amendment is put in place. Now we have, back to the main motion. Any discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Six and zero, the ordinance is adopted. We're now down to, I'm sorry, six and one. We're now down to the first reading by title only, ordinance number 695. This is an ordinance to amend a certain master agreement governing the I-77 corridor regional industrial park between Richland County and Fairfield County so as to enlarge the park, Colight International Limited, formerly Project Light. Any, excuse me, do we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved and properly seconded, provide first reading to ordinance number 695. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Seven and zero, first reading is provided to ordinance number 695. We're now down to board and commission minutes. Included in your packet was the minutes from the Aeronautics Commission. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the Aeronautics Commission minutes as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Seven and zero, those minutes are approved. No board and commission appointments, no old business, no new business. Mr. Taylor, your report, please.
Yes, sir. The first item that we have on the agenda tonight in my report is Mr. Chris Timmers. We want to introduce him and have him, if you'd like to come and say a few words.
Well, I'm Mike Gannford here. I've just recently joined you all in the chamber. I look forward to working with you. I've already met a number of you. I live in Columbia. I've lived in South Carolina for over 20 years. I like to think I know the state. But as I said, look forward to it, and I see a long and successful collaboration come on the side.
And Mr. Chris Timmers is the new interim director of the Chamber of Commerce. I didn't finish that. Also, I want to make introduction of Ms. Beverly Mosey, if you would stand. She's our new grants writer. She takes Stephen Gaither's position. I look forward to her bringing a lot of money into the county through the various grants applications we're going to be pursuing. And tonight, we have Mr. Keith Branham, who will be giving the department head report. Ms. Keith, you can come on up. Keith is, Mr. Branham is the director of building maintenance for the county.
Good afternoon. Just want to say I appreciate y'all having me here today. My name is Keith Branham, Department Head of the Building Maintenance, and I'm here today just to talk about some of the things we do and how we do things and some of the projects. I see Mr. Anderson's got the thumb drive going, so we'll just start into it. Contents on this will be my staff, functions of the department, number of buildings, HVAC units, HVAC units, work order procedure in maintenance projects. This is building maintenance staff. On the left, of course, that's me as director. Have one supervisor, HVAC tech. Maintenance techs, I have two. Maintenance helpers, little crew, I have two. Custodians, I have five. Administrator assistant, one. Inmate labors, I have 18. There's 10 women and, excuse me, eight women and 10 men, and that makes about 58% of my workforce. And I just want to add too that we really, really depend on these folks. These folks pick up trash, paint, serve at functions, they answer the phone, they cut grass, so we really, really count on them. Functions, excuse me, functions of the department, make general repairs in the county buildings, upkeep HVAC units, keep the county buildings clean, keep grounds looking presentable, and keep recycling bins clear. County buildings, HVAC units, I've got 23 buildings, 91 HVAC units, 11 recycling centers, eight recreational parks. We also pick up a little on the county, Southside Road, and I have 28 streets also, and we keep recycling bins cleared. HVAC units, during the previous years, we have contracted out service costing the county about $30,000. We now do most of the servicing in-house, cutting out the contract services, saving the county around $30,000. We have 91 units that we maintain. If more than two units are down, we do have someone we can call to come in and assist us, but most time, we take care of ourselves. This is Walter Brown in the Commerce Center, and this is a grass cutting and landscaping. In the previous year, we've had contractors come in keeping up landscaping and grass cutting with the cost upwards of $50,000, and at the present time, we use the state inmate labor for the upkeep of the landscaping and grass cutting in the parks and roadways. Cost of the contractors, we've eliminated that also. Loan equipment, 2016, new program was implemented allowing loan equipment to be repaired in-house. Loan equipment repairs, we are currently repairing all loan equipment for the county. In the past, we had sent out the loan equipment for repairs costing the county up to $50,000 also. With in-house repair, we only spent around $10,000 on parts. All labor is in-house now. Landscaping equipment, yearly, we are servicing 18 Ryan moors, seven push, 30 wheelers, 20 backpack blowers. Loan equipment repairs, since we began repairing loan equipment in-house, we have saved the county approximately $40,000. Work order procedure, in July 1, 2017, until the present, we have completed 300-plus work Now, these are some of the projects that we've done in this little building, this little recycling centers in mid for next city. We had the building brought in, set down, we tied it down, underpinned it, put the porches on it, finished the inside, we run all the power to it, watered and set the building up to go. Just another project, just over there in the family court office, next to that, was in Ms. Matthews' office. The top left picture up there, actually, we went in there and we put a door in that wall and extended our office out, replaced all the carpet, and we painted and fixed sheet rug and all, put ceramic tile in the restroom, and finished the project. And this is the Department of Social Services building, and the top right and left, that's my guys in there working, but the bottom left and right, and you can see hallways are endless, we just never get done painting. So we try to keep it all painted, and then one on the bottom right is one of the rooms that we go in and exit was painted blue and green, except for we had done the painting. This is another one here, another example, this is at DSS also, the top left and right one is carpets, and really, you could see how nasty and bad they were. What it was wadded up and stained, and the bottom one is where we went in and removed it and replaced all the carpet. This is some of the work we've done around the ball fields, Drawdy Park, and then Garden Street also, actually, we went in and we removed all the tops and put the metal on This picture here is too, some of our grass cutting, and this is over in Forest Hills, actually, and the folks that live around here know where Forest Hills, where you go up the hill, around that sharp curve, and the top left and right, really, before you couldn't really see it, actually, you know, and it really was dangerous, you know, if you left the road and run through it, you'd run through the weeds before you hit some of the guard rail, you wouldn't even know it was there. And the bottom left and right, it's actually where we went in and we cleaned up everything. And this litter, you know, litter's litter. We just picking up litter. Top left and right is where we are picking it, and the bottom left and right is also where we cleaned up. We are currently picking up 1,060 bags of trash a week, and I mean literally a week. You know, I don't know, it's like we can go down a road and clean it up in 10 days, we can go through there and we can pick it up again. You know, I don't know what's got folks throwing trash out, but they are. Anyway, we have three trucks running on Monday through Friday, and a truck running on Saturday in the winter time, and in the summertime, I just don't, all I have is one, and the other trucks will be cutting grass. But I do have a number on there, if any of your folks, you know, wanted to call in, you know, you've got trash reports, you're welcome to call us, and we'll make an attempt to get it picked up. Custodians, we maintain a scheduled regular cleaning, carpet and tile, we're cleaning nightly, Monday through Thursday, and most of this work we do at night when the folks are gone. Overall objectives, continue to cut costs and save as much as possible on our budget, continue to upkeep county buildings, continue to upkeep HVAC units, continue to keep grounds looking presentable, continue to keep recycling bins clear and roads clear of trash. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, councilmembers? Mr. Roof?
Yeah, this is very impressive. I'm proud of what y'all are doing and using inmate labor is like, what, $4 a day for inmate labor?
Yes, sir.
So that's, you're saving the county a lot of money, and that's really impressive what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thanks for what you're doing.
Yes, sir. Mr. Robinson?
Mr. Chair. Ms. Branham, thank you for what you do. Just curious, does any one of your workers ever call the Sheriff's Department litter control, or do they assist you in any way?
Well, no, normally at the present, now, we just get, you know, either called in or, you know, Mr. Anderson will send a work order in, somebody's called in, and then we'll respond and clean it.
Mr. Robinson, I think I better answer your question. If we see litter and someone's name is on it, we can call the sheriff's office or code enforcement, they can come pick it up. We can't touch it because it won't be, you helped me with the word, prima facie evidence. So we have to get them to come get it themselves. If we touch it, then it then broke the chain of custody. So when we do have a lot of trash, where we can identify whose trash it is, we will call and get them to come out and make a case on it.
So I guess my question is, is code enforcement handling it or the Sheriff's Department?
Code enforcement handling.
Because they are level three? Okay. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Goins?
Yes, I just definitely want to say thank you so much, and the projects that you're doing are great, but when you talk about saving money, that's excellent.
Yeah, we try.
Thank you. You're doing a great job, and to you and to our team, thank you so much.
Anyone else?
I think that Mr. Branham is kind of being kind of modest. With the inmate labor and the stuff they do, it's been tremendous. They have cut costs. I know Jimmer Ray will be proud, we've been cutting costs and not sending stuff out, and the money that they save, they take and apply to other projects that Mr. Taylor won't complete it. So that's making the dollars go further.
Absolutely, and I'll just echo what everyone else has said and say that I think all the way from administration to Mr. Branham and your staff have done a fantastic job. When I first got on council, we were doing some of those things like farming out the, you know, lawn maintenance, grass cutting, things like that, and some of us here, and I'm not saying we take the credit for it, that's not the case, but we mentioned it, and that call has been very well answered, so we very much appreciate everything y'all do and the improvements that have been made and all the stuff we're doing in-house now, saving us money.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
I want to let council know and recognize our coroner, Chris Hill, on what a wonderful job he did. We recently had a ceremonial burying of unclaimed bodies, and everyone who attended, I think, was very moved by the ceremony. So I want to, again, just recognize our coroner for doing such a good job on that program. One item I didn't have on the agenda, but I did want to let council know about something that's just come up. We are going to have an issue with solid waste. One of our transfer stations will be closed coming up, and we're going to have to start hauling things to Chester for a temporary period. Davis, do you have the times on that? We'll get this out, the schedule to council, but just want to let you all know about that. DEHEC, I think, is making some requirements of waste management, and they're going to have to close the transfer station temporarily, so there will be some inconveniences and changing of hours.
Yes, that will be April 2nd through April 9th, and, Mr. Chairman, I see you looking at me. I got that email on Friday at 2:30, and we took it appropriate action to contact in Chester to see, could they accept our race, and they will. And what we are going to need to do, because we are off Friday, and we're going to need to close the recycling centers on Sunday, because Chester's not open, we won't have anybody to haul to on Monday to try not to have too much rates overflowing on the grounds. So we already got signs to post up at the recycling centers for all of this week, for Sunday closing. That way, we could have a little break. So Monday, when they get full, we are start hauling back Tuesday because Chester will be closed. And we only got this Friday, and I understand your frustration, because we had frustration about it also.
Do we have any estimate on how long we're going to have to do that?
Only through the 9th, after the 9th issue.
Through the 9th, and then the only other question I have, which may be what you're imagining I'm going to ask, is these requirements that we knew about and we didn't meet and we got dinged on them, or these are new requirements? What happened there?
Well, no, they operate this.
Right, this is not us, this is Waste Management. They got dinged by DEHEC to make some improvements, it's not us, they operate that, it's got nothing to do with the county.
Okay, okay. That's the contracted part of the service. I got you. Okay, all right. So is there any cost impact whatsoever?
We are looking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're looking at that, and again.
Obviously, transferring it out of county is that way, but.
Actually, the tipping fee is a little bit cheaper in Chester than it is here, but we're going to have the manpower and the hauling cost.
Who does Chester's servicing?
Chester has their own landfill, that's why it's a little bit cheaper. I knew y'all were going to ask that question.
That's a little cheaper, but again, we're going to have the associated cost of hauling it and the manpower to do that, and we will total that up, and we may approach waste management about that since this was an issue that they caused.
Absolutely, I think that'd be appropriate. All right, anything else?
That's all I had.
All right, this time, we'll move the clerk to council's report. Ms. Davis?
Mr. Chairman, councilmembers, if you'll direct your attention to the 2018 meeting dates. We're about to begin the budget process and to point out some important dates. April the 9th, the regular council meeting will be the first reading of the budget. April the 10th will be the first budget work session for agencies. April the 17th, budget work session for departments. April the 23rd, the regular council meeting will be the second reading of the budget and the public hearing. April the 24th will be a work session for departments if needed, and I believe Mr. Taylor has some comments.
Yes, is it the 10th? Is that the one that's for the entities?
Yes.
Okay. I think all councilmembers do have a package of the requests. You don't have the full budget proposal that we're putting together currently, but you have the budget request from the various entities, outside entities that we fund. If you would look through that, if you have any questions, on the 10th, we do have that scheduled. We can have each one of them come in, but if you don't have any questions, because I think most of those requests, and looking through them, are pretty much consistent with what they were the year before, if you don't have any questions, we may not have to have that one.
Mr. Taylor, let me just ask you this on that. Are you recommending, before we've had a chance to look at that, as you mentioned, we did just get them tonight, but are you recommending any increases in any of those agencies' funding?
Not at this point.
Okay.
We're still reviewing, and we're still in the budget process, and we're going to look at that. Obviously, we take all the numbers that we get in as far as requests, but we've got to match that up against what we think the revenue is going to be. And so once we have the revenue numbers, we may make some changes, but at this point, no.
Well, you know, my favor has been to keep them where they are, but I'll speak with other councilmembers on the requests and confer with them, and we'll let you know if we need to bring anyone in, and if so, which agencies, based on the request. All right.
Just a couple more. I just wanted to point out, May the 4th is going to be the Volunteer Fireman and Rescue Squad Recognition Banquet, and June the 27th is the Intergovernmental Meeting that will be hosted by the council.
Thank you very much, Ms. Davis. We're now down to the second public comment session.
We have two speakers tonight. First, Ms. Shirley Green, speaking on Build Something.
Shirley Green, District Two, Ridgeway. Let's build something. It was recently brought to my attention that the Kaiser Building in front of Fairfield County Courthouse is for sale. The 8,000-square-foot building may be a convenient temporary location for some courthouse offices or departments. How much will it cost to retrofit that building? How easy would it be to direct citizens who have business with Fairfield County to cross the street instead of traveling to another location? From my HTV building experience, a few engineered structural beams, additional bathrooms, fixing the elevator, constructing office walls, upgrading electricals, heating and cooling systems, and possibly a new roof would do it. Just joking. What would it take? On Friday of last week, Governor McMaster declared most of Fairfield County an opportunity zone. For background, opportunity zones offer favorable capital gain treatment for taxpayers who invest in designated high-poverty neighborhoods, invest in real estate or businesses located in a qualified zone, hold it for 10 years, and not only can you sell your investment free of capital gains tax, but you also get a tax break on untaxed capital gains rolled into an opportunity zone investment. This designation gives investors a tax incentive to invest in low-income neighborhoods. How can we involve the citizens of Fairfield County in a decision-making regarding possible investments and investors? Can we entice investors to invest in our vacant industrial sites, create new housing and businesses, knowing that four distinct quadrants exist in Fairfield County? We basically take a look at the northeast, the northwest, the southeast, and the southwest as quadrants. How do we entice our citizens to use services in the central part of the county when they are physically closer to Newbury, Columbia, Chester, or Camden? Can dependable transportation be a solution? Can citizen involvement help us plan for the future we want to see? I invite all of you to make sure that citizen input is a part of taking a look at our opportunity zones.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on the budget. Next, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on the budget.
Randy Bright, District 1, Ridgeway. Got a couple suggestions on the budget that might be helpful to both citizens and council alike as you go through the process. In reviewing the drafts that are currently online now, there's one particular one that always catches my eye. That's the expenditure lines, and it's, they're always attached with explanations, just brief explanations that give you instantly why we're raising or not raising or reducing that particular expenses or any other anomaly that goes with that. I'd like to see that type of explanation attached to also revenue and the other lines that are in the budget so that the citizens and yourselves alike can see instantly, oh, well, we're estimating to collect $2 million more in sales tax. Well, why? That's the first question you would want to ask and you would ask. So, if those explanations are in each of those lines, that will help all of us going through this process to know what's going on and get a better idea with these explanations. Also, I think it would particularly help the public and you guys if we maybe had a top-five deviation in dollars from last year's budget as you work through it, so you immediately can see those exceptions that just really stand out. Is it a mistake? Is it right? But you always look for red flags in anything you ever do, and certainly, listing five or 10 of the most deviant expenses to last year or the most change to revenue expectations. Let's find out why. And having that in front of you guys and the public will keep us focused attention on the real priorities of this budget, and it's always the deviations, the large deviations, what matter. So, just a couple of suggestions as far as the process. One other suggestion, as far as a budget is concerned, there's always talk about unfunded mandates, and I understand that discussion. It's a burden for citizens and municipalities alike, but the biggest unfunded budget item that's facing us now, hardly anybody talks about, but it's a ticking time bomb for the entire state, and I'm talking about the state pension fund. The state pension fund is $53 billion underfunded, and now, the employers get to share in that burden, and then, both from an accounting standpoint and a potential law standpoint. And if we don't get a handle on this, you're not going to have to worry about funding the jail or anything else, because all you're going to be able to fund is a broken state pension fund. So, my suggestion there is that council stand united and get with our delegation and say, fix this pension fund, which is continually ranked one of the worst managed in the entire United States. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes segment two.
All right, we are now down to county council time. Any council members have anything? Mr. Douglas?
I received an email, and it reads, "I sent you a messenger and messenger, never received a response back from you. My name is Dwayne Robinson, Sr., and I live in the Midford community, and I am the county. I am curious when our recycle center will be redone like the rest of them have been in the county. Our center is old and rundown and antiquated. We in Midford pay taxes just as though the rest of the county. Our center is eyesore and not used friendly at all." Anyway, he describes that, and he asked me to try to help him, and emailed him back, and I said, "I will bring this to the attention of Director of Recreation Admiral and Administrator Jason Taylor and Deputy Administrator Davis Anderson." But all I had to do was contact Davis. Anyway, I contacted Davis, and Davis said he'd take care of it, and Patty's going to read a letter that we got back.
Dear Mr. Douglas, this letter is a long time coming, but I would like to thank Public Works Deputy Director Jake Gaston and his hard-working staff for always taking care of the requests I've made regarding Living Waters Drive. I would be considered possibly our lookout resident on this little corner of Fairfield County. As you can see from the attachments, Mr. Gaston is right on top of things. Having been in the servicing business, I appreciate his quick and thorough responses. My little recycling center has always been a sore thumb to me for the gentlemen who take care of us. As you can see, they are happy gentlemen in their new home. Every time I'm up there, especially Mr. Perry, continues to thank me for getting the new building. Although Mr. Gaston notes they were already on the case, they think it was me. I just wanted to say thank you. I hope you will share this with other council members. It is so nice to see our taxes at work. And one more thing, I like the new Midford Rec Center. Took my first line dancing class this week with Mike Good. Fun. Have a wonderful day and keep up the excellent work in representing our county. Sincerely, Judith Marshall.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Mr. Chair, first, I just wanted to congratulate Mr. Timmers, becoming the interim director of the chamber, and congratulate Ms. Mosey. Welcome to the family also. Also, I wanted to inform the citizens that August the, I'm sorry, April the 4th, that's my second time doing that. April the 4th, the public is invited to come and join me, oh, I just lost it, for a Walkable Windsboro Visioning Event. It'll be here in council chambers. It'll be from 12 to 2 p.m. We'll be implementing a pedestrian plan, so all the public is invited, and there will be snacks and refreshments.
Anyone else? Mr. Roof?
Yeah, just to say that Ridgeway's been missing the library for the last few months since it closed up, and they have the bookmobile a couple days a week, but I've talked to some of our administration about possibly looking to locating another building to put the library in, and hopefully, in the near future, we have to do some more research on that, but we're looking into that. I know that the town of Ridgeway has applied some grants that a building that might would incorporate the library building as well, but we don't know how far out that's going to be, so hopefully, we can do something in the near future to accommodate the library in Ridgway again. So, that's all I've got. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Goins?
Wanted to piggyback on what Mr. Robinson said, and welcome Mr. Kimbrels and Mr. Mosey, also, again, Mr. Brown, to the team of Fairfield County. Thank you so much. Looking forward to, as administrators said, forward to great monies coming. So, thank you all, each and every one of you. Welcome to the team.
Anyone else? All right. We're now down to executive session. We've got two items for tonight. The first is a legal matter. It's an update on litigation against SCENE in reference to the abandoned VC summer new nuclear project. And item B is a proposed contractual matter. This is discussion regarding the potential purchase of real property identified as Fairfield County TMS number 126-03-01-001-000. Do we have a motion to go into executive session for those purposes?
Segmented.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we go into executive session for the purposes as stated. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? We're now in executive session. Thank you.